The Committee on Human and Natural Resources and Election Reform calls this public hearing to order. Good morning, it is now seven minutes after nine AM and this public hearing is called to order. The chairman is temporarily tied up with another matter, so as his vice chair, I will go ahead and conduct this public hearing. In accordance with the open government law, notices of this hearing were sent to all main media outlets, all senators and stakeholders five days in advance on September eighth, two thousand fourteen, and a second notice was sent on September eleventh, two thousand fourteen. Before we begin, I ask everyone to please sign in if you're here to testify. I would also like to recognize and thank the senators for coming this morning. We have to my right Vice Speaker BJ Cruz, to his right Senator Frank Uggan, to my left is Senator Eileen Yamashita, and to her left is Senator Mike Limteokol. Thank you for joining us this morning. Items for public consideration this morning are three bills. First bill is Bill three-five-three dash thirty-two. It's an act to promote plastic bag reduction in Guam. Bill number three-seven-six dash three-two, it's an act requiring the completion of an independent economic impact statement relative to the minimum wage on Guam. And bill number, the third bill is Bill number three-nine-two dash thirty-two. It's an act to add a new subsection C to Section thirty-one oh two of Chapter Three Title Three Guam Code Annotated, and a new type, and a new Section thirty-one oh one point three to thirty-one oh one of Chapter Three Title Sixteen, relative to voter preregistration of persons at least sixteen years of age. Before I call up the, I'm gonna go ahead and call up then the panel, those who have signed up to testify on Bill three-five-three dash three-two. And that is, well, Mr. Palacios from the EPA Administrator is unable to attend the public hearing, but we'll be... Oh, okay, so I'm gonna call up Mr. Palacios, please. And also signing up to testify is Mr. is Ms. Pat Nichols. Are you giving oral testimony, Ms. Nichols? Okay, so you can step forward, please. And Mr. Bob Shambak. But before we begin with the testimonies, I would like to ask the sponsor, the author of the bill to go ahead and give a brief overview of the bill.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, and thank you all for joining us this morning at your legislature. Bill number three-five-three dash thirty-two is a measure to promote plastic bag reduction on Guam for the protection of our environment. And in a very brief snapshot, what we are attempting to do is to be better stewards of our land by curbing the plastics in our land, in our waters, in our landfill. And so this is a step to specifically identify the elimination of non-biodegradable plastics. And since the introduction of this measure, we've had many conversations and emails and a lot of research coming our way. So I'm very interested in what you have to say to us today. And please know that one of the aspects of this particular measure is that the Environmental Protective Protection Agency, our Guam Environmental Protection Agency, would actually be the one to develop the rules and regulations. So they would go through that whole process where the rules and regs would be developed by them, and they would have public hearings and this sort and then come back to us. So this is a jumpstart to saying that we need to do a little bit better by curbing what we're putting in our landfill, in our waters, and in our, in our roadways. And so, Mr. Chair, that's essentially the intent of this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator. I'm gonna go ahead and start in the order of sign up. But before we do that, please remember to speak directly into the microphones. And before you provide your testimony, please state your full name, the agency or organization that you represent, if any, and whether or not you are in support or in opposition of the bill. We'll start off with Ms. Nichols and then be followed by Mr. Shambak, and then wrap it up, Mr. Palacios, after that. Ms. Nichols?
Pat Nichols, I'm in opposition to the bill. The plastic bags are durable, cheap, and readily available. As the bill states, billions of bags are discarded every year. Most bags collect in our landfill and others on the side of the road and ocean. So my suggestion is to completely eliminate plastic bags. I do not think leaving enforcement, as the bill states, to the EPA on the biodegradable bags is a good idea either, for it would probably go by the way of other bills like the bottle bill. And I think that the way to go is to not have plastic bags. Thank you.
So let me understand this, Ms. Nichols. You're in opposition to the bill?
I am.
Which seeks to ban the use of plastic bags?
The bill says that we should go on to have biodegradable plastic bags. I'm against biodegradable plastic bags. I think that we should just go no plastic bags.
Okay, I understand. Alright, thank you. Mr. Shambak?
Good morning, Senators. Robert Shambak, I'm a member of the Recycling Association of Guam, and I'm also a resident of the village of Dedado. Over my many years on Guam, I've noticed that, you know, the use of single-use plastic bags have been on the increase, and a lot of businesses give them out freely. As the bill is written right now, I'm in opposition of the bill, mostly because it is only the ban on non-biodegradable bags. And I would also like to see a ban on all single-use plastic bags at retail centers. There's been a lot of research and a lot of opposition and also support to plastic bags bans around the world. There are a lot of different iterations of plastic bag bans, how they're written, how the residents of a certain area actually respond to the bans also, and how the legislation and the laws are actually written and enforced. The numbers, some of the research, it is a very small bill. I think it could be beefed up a little bit with more, more facts, more research. Also, in particular, just to small island nations. Hawaii is one of the states that has totally banned plastic bags across all the counties. American Samoa has recently put that law into effect as well, and most recently Yap, Yap Island. So, you know, my, my big thing, and I had sent out some emails to Senator Yamashita about, we're, we're a small island, we have between hundred-six to hundred-seventy thousand people on this island. How can cities the size of San Francisco, Portland, Seattle, implement bans? And I think we're just taking baby steps. We've seen it in the waste reduction of the Guam receiver. When they came in, made an assessment of what could actually be diverted out of the waste stream, cardboard was one of the first things. We saw a decline of waste by about forty percent just by telling the people, "Sorry, next week you can't bring it." And I really think that's what hap- needs to happen on Guam, is we just need to go out there and say, "Plastic bags are done. We don't want them." You know, I, I, I give kudos to the companies on Guam that have implemented reduction plans. But I've also talked to those companies as well, questioning why they haven't just implemented a total ban. A lot of times, benefits to the people, the consumer, are given. And I think some of the more effective, according to some of the research that I've looked at, some of the more effective ways to actually ban the bags are to charge people for using other types of bags if you don't bring your own reusable bag. So by charging five cents per paper bag or other bag at the point of sale. Just a little bit more knowledge for everyone here. I think the definition of biodegradable or non-biodegradable has to be defined a little bit better. There are better definitions. Some proponents in Hawaii, or some opponents in Hawaii to the way they banned theirs was biodegradable. After doing some research and testing, they're finding out that more than ninety percent of the bag is still manufactured by petroleum products. And although we're not trying to ban the petroleum products in our bags, a lot of biodegradable bags are made from cornstarch or other materials rather than using the oil products that are still used for some of the biodegradable bags. So even though it says biodegradable on it, you have to have some kind of a certification or some kind of testing result that shows, hey, the bag you're using is biodegradable, and it'll biodegrade within six months or a year. I think Section Two, so that was Section One of the bill, I think it just needs beefed up a little bit more. There's a lot of research out there. What you pick and choose, you know, maybe should be put out. Talk to some of the specialists on island and some of the people that know the business. Section Two, the timeframe, if this bill is actually signed into law, I think the timeframe of one January twenty fifteen, which is essentially three months from now, is way too short. A lot of bans go into effect six months to twelve months after the law is actually signed. So I think to give the businesses a fair shake, I think it should be extended. Going back to the research a little bit, I'm sure over the past couple of years, you've heard about the Guam Zero Waste Plan. There is a white paper in the Guam Zero Waste Plan that has a lot of research. So again, I don't think you have to go back and rewrite the book. We paid a lot of money for this white paper, and I think we should use it. There's a lot of good recommendations in it, and also for the credibility, some of the major components of the laws or the bills that are actually introduced. Determine which single-use bags to target. Determine which businesses to target. Now, in the bill, it says all businesses. That's good, I support that, but I don't know how much kickback again, what's gonna be feasible. Determine a timeline, as I said, I think the timeline is very short for implementation. Also on the enforcers' side of the house, which I'll go into in Section Three. Consider exemptions. Establish enforcement penalties, which the bill has done. And then tracking progress, how are you gonna, how are you actually gonna track the progress? And I know that's in the bills, and, I'm sorry, in the regulations that Guam EPA would actually put in there. Some of the major milestones in the Zero Waste Plan were by twenty fourteen to conduct a litter of waste research that was specific to Guam and convey it to the stakeholders, stakeholders to enact legislation. To date, I don't think that has been done. The only real research that I am aware of is that whenever they do the coastal zone cleanup, or the coastal cleanup, which actually happens this coming Saturday, they actually tabulate the waste, and plastic bags are also tabulated. It's often a major component of the waste that we find on Guam. By twenty fifteen, the Zero Waste Plan indicates that we should reach an effective date of the plastic bag ban. So, I don't know who they are. There are several organizations such as the Recycling Association of Guam that could affect or could help with that. And then twenty seventeen and beyond, consider adding a paper bag ban. Now, I, I won't get into paper bags, this is a plastic bag at this point. But I would love to see, as I said, I, I'm a resident of Dedado, so every Saturday and Sunday I see bags flying past my house. And I've talked to Mayor Savara several times about implementing a plastic bag ban at the Dedado Flea Market. That still hasn't been done. I think the plans are in, in, in order for the new farmer's market in Dedado at Fatima Road. But there are many challenges, again, as the Zero Waste Plan states. And I'm not gonna read through all those, but, you know, this is a nice condensed document that I think everyone involved in the bill should read, should take a look at. Again, there was a lot of time, effort, and money that was put into this. And I think if, if it's maybe rewritten or, or more data's put in there, I would definitely consider supporting this ban. As far as the enforcement goes, the enforcement seems reasonable. However, I am concerned that Guam EPA currently lacks the resources to actually manage, write the regulations, and enforce the regulations at this time without the proper funding and personnel. That's my, that's my two cents on this bill. Thank you, Senators.
Thank you, Mr. Shambak. Mr. Palacios?
Upper Day, good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of this committee. My name is Eric Palacios, I'm the administrator of the Guam Environmental Protection Agency, and I do support the intent of this bill. I believe that the long-term objectives that are included in this bill are certainly attainable. And I believe that if we do attain the goals that are outlined herein, that it would result in a better environment for all of us and for generations to come. I should, though, point out that there are a couple of things that I would like to either engage in further discussion with Senator Yamashita and anyone else on this committee. The first one is, as Mr. Shambak had mentioned, the, the effective date. I know that there are a number of companies on island that currently have a large volume of plastic bags in their inventory. I, I don't think it would be possible for them to use up all of those and get, you know, whatever investment they put into purchasing them and shipping them out to Guam by this deadline, by the same token. You know, for Guam EPA to come up with robust regulations and to map out its enforcement action plan, we certainly need more time than, than the deadline that's indicated herein to be able to do that. I think we can all agree that we all want this program to be successful. The other thing, or one other thing that I would like to point out are the figures outlined in, in the bill itself. I think that they are close, maybe, maybe close to the actual numbers that Guam generates. Though I'm not sure that they're exactly that high. And, and I only mention that because it speaks to the life of the landfill. And I would hate for any of us to cause any false alarms in the community that, you know, sales are closing up quicker, or filling up quicker than, than maybe anyone anticipated or would like. Mr. Shambak is correct in that in Guam Zero Waste Plan, the reduction of plastic bags is one of the goals that are outlined for our community. I think that, starting with reducing or migrating more toward biodegradable bags is a great first step. One of the things we need to ascertain, I think, is the level of biodegradability. Bags, certain bags biodegrade in less than a year, some in three years, some in five years, some in ten years. Maybe that's something that we can more define, more clearly define. And then it will really put us, put Guam on the road to zero waste. You know, plastic bags, in any form, whether they're, whether they be biodegradable or standard petroleum-based bags, do pose a significant threat to our environment, on land, airborne, in our oceans, for marine life, for, for wildlife in our, in our forests. And so I believe that, you know, taking this step, and maybe not necessarily completely banning bags in general, because there are some beneficial reuse options out there for families, you know, as far as plastic bags are concerned. I think it's a great first step, and I support where Senator Yamashita is going with her bill. I applaud her for introducing such a brave legislation, if I may say. And I offer my commitment and Guam EPA's commitment to working with you and working with this committee to really making it work. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions from this panel? Start with Senator Yamashita.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Thank you to each of you for raising the issues. I'm glad that we're all on the same page about being concerned about the environment. I agree with timelines and the concern about maybe not doing enough soon enough, or not doing, or trying to do too much in a short amount of time. I understand all of that. I wholeheartedly agree that documents and work that's already been done should be reflected and integrated. We have spoken to two major wholesalers on this island about their inventory, about how they look towards their current businesses phasing this in, and both thought that it would be very workable. But I agree with you, Mr. Palacios, that, you know, the timelines do need to be addressed. This was introduced a little bit ago and stuff, and I'm just very grateful that we are having a public hearing today. So I thank the committee for that. So I will request Senator Espino to allow us to have a markup, and perhaps we can all come together and have a conversation about where this should go and how we should move forward. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Yamashita. Vice Speaker? Senator Uggan? Senator Limteokol? Alright, thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and dismiss this panel here. I have final sign up, Mr. Peter Skro. On Bill three-five-three. Please speak into the mic. Identify yourself for the record.
I just simply wanna say a few things. I just got back from a month in the mainland and was in San Francisco, Los Angeles, Minneapolis, Lexington, Kentucky, and also in Austin, Texas. And every single state is, has banned plastic bags. I'm in total support of this bill. The only suggestion I have is, I believe that eight months is a good timeline to make the transitions. I don't, I think a year is too long. I see this as being, I really do think that this time is of the essence of a bill like this, considering not only the receivership, but I also think that if this is, I'm gonna say, publicized of what the decision is, unfortunately, he's a very unreasonable man, but I'm hoping it sends a message to the receiver. And I gotta say that also the district court, that steps are being made. There is a supermarket that unfortunately I have to shop at all the time. And they have a very similar program. And they're working with other supermarkets, so there's already a movement within our community at this. And I, I believe that if this passes, it could accelerate that movement. So that's, that's the gist of my testimony. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Skro. There being no other persons signing up to testify on Bill three-five-three dash three-two. Bill three-five-three dash three-two is hereby duly heard. The next bill is Bill three-seven-six dash thirty-two. I'm sorry. Yeah, three-seven-six dash three-two. That's an act requiring the completion of an independent economic impact statement relative to the minimum wage on Guam introduced by Senator Eileen Yamashita. Senator Yamashita? A brief overview, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, Bill number three-seventy-six dash thirty-two asks that an act requiring the completion of an independent economic impact statement relative to the minimum wage on Guam be, be made. We've had a great community conversation this past year on the minimum wage, on working with our private sector, and the overall benefits for the businesses and the employees. This is a result of our, our private partners asking that an independent economic study be done. And so this was introduced, and we look forward to the conversation and where we go with this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Signing up to provide testimony is Mr. Manny Cruz. Please step forward. Louis or Louise? Okay, Louis Torres. Dr. Rowain? I might go ahead. Bobby Shingey? And while I got Pete Skro and Mary Rhodes, we can go ahead and finish with this panel. No, I kinda like the even number. Alright, thanks. We're gonna go ahead and start with Mr. Cruz, please.
Good morning, Upper Day, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee.
My name is Manuel Kirigwe Cruz, better known as Manny Cruz. I am currently serving as the Director of the Guam Department of Labor. I come before you to testify on Bill number three-seven-six dash thirty-two, an act requiring the completion of an independent economic impact statement relative to the minimum wage on Guam. On July tenth, twenty fourteen, Governor Eddie Calhoun signed into law the substituted and amended bill, number three-one-six dash thirty-two, an act to repeal and reenact Section thirty-one oh five of Article One, Chapter twenty-two Guam Code Annotated, relative to responsibly raising the minimum wage. The bill was passed by the Guam Legislature on July first, twenty fourteen. It was a compromised version of the original bill, which proposes to increase the current minimum wage of seven dollars and twenty-five cents to eight dollars and twenty-five cents an hour by January first, twenty fifteen. It is noted that the compromised bill, however, had struck out and removed the provision requiring an independent economics assessment. It is our understanding that the intended purpose of Bill number three-seven-six dash thirty-two is to restore the provision to require the completion of an economic, an independent economic statement relative to the minimum wage of Guam no later than January first, twenty sixteen. In Section First, in Section One of the bill, it provides that the Director of Labor, Department of Labor, shall be required to issue a request or proposal to conduct a one-year independent economic impact statement relative to the minimum wage on Guam no later than January first, twenty sixteen. However, in the bill, we are recommended for your consideration that a study is a more appropriate term than a mere statement. In light of the above, the Guam Department of Labor fully supports Bill number three-seven-six dash thirty-two. As an employing and regulatory agency of the government of Guam, initially, we have had some concerns that the increase in the minimum wage that was being proposed was going to be artificially implemented without the benefit of some kind of an economics impact study to justify the increase. But that provision has now been corrected by the substitute bill. In closing, want to recognize Senator Eileen Yamashita and to thank her for her foresightfulness and vision to introduce Bill number three-seven-six thirty-two at this time. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on Bill number three-seven-six dash thirty-two.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. Mr. Torres?
My name is Louis Torres, I'm president of the Guam Machinization Mission of Subtlely Adventist. I'm also chairman of the, as the clinic board, and do a few chairings here and there. I'm speaking in favor, Senator, of your bill. The Bible says, "No man buildeth a house except he counteth costs." I'm a pastor, and there are many biblical principles that help us to guide our island here. And I feel that if you're going to pass a bill without an actual study, for example, one of my business, church members who has a business already shared with me that, that you cannot just pass a dollar increase to a few without considering all the employees. So he said that just in that dollar raise is gonna cost him four hundred thousand dollars a year increase, which he has not already considered in the budget. So, without actually studying the, the actual outcome of, of what that one dollar will do, it seems like a small jump, but you have to consider all the employees. If you only have one employee, that's not a challenge. You have two hundred employees, then you're, then you're dealing with a challenge. And so, I think it's a good thing to follow biblical principle in this, and that is, as, as the Lord says, "For if a man build a house without counting the cost and can't finish it..." finish it, then he'll be ashamed and embarrassed," and people will laugh at him and saying, "Aha, he started building, he couldn't even finish it." So, a due, um, study is in line here to find out what the actual rippling effect will be in our economy, because you also have to consider that as soon as the merchants have to pay more money, uh, guess what? The prices will increase for whatever they're selling. So, what will actually be the final outlay? Um, how will it finally pan out? I think it's an important aspect. So, I strongly support the bill, and I, I, I trust that the Senate will consider the wisdom of implementing this, uh, suggestion. Thank you so much for the opportunity to come and speak to you.
Thank you, Mr. Torres. Uh, Dr. Ruane?
Good morning and half a day, um, Mr. Vice Chair and members of the committee. Um, my name is Maria Clarette Ruane of the University of Guam. I humbly and respectfully submit this testimony in support of Bill number three seventy six dash thirty two, uh, by Senator Alina Yamashita, Ph.D. At the outset, I declare that I am submitting this testimony in my capacity as Professor of Economics at UOG School of Business and Public Administration, and as resident development economist at the University of Guam Pacific Center for Economic Initiatives. My testimony is also based on my years of expertise as an economist, which I will detail later, later on. I support the intent of Bill number thirty, three seventy six dash thirty two, as well as other bills designed to yield quantitative measures and analyses on the economic impact of a change, in this case, a policy change to raise the local minimum wage per hour from seven dollars and twenty-five cents to eight dollars twenty-five cents effective January first, two thousand and fifteen. As we all know, it is rarely the case that a change could only, could have only negative or positive effects. Often, it would have both, and as such, unless we measure these supposing effects, we would never be certain what the overall or net effect of, of that change would be. It was exactly this type of quantitative approach to the likely effects of raising the minimum wage that Vice Speaker Benjamin J. F. Cruz and his staff used to convince me, another island economist, I believe, to support his original Bill number three hundred sixteen dash thirty two, or its, or its amended version, which was signed into public law one thirty-two dash one seventy-eight by Governor Calvo on June tenth, two thousand and fourteen. As hard as I played devil's advocate to the Vice Speaker and his staff during our consultation meetings, they won me over because they did the research and calculations carefully and competently. However, as they and I are aware, using past economic data, in this case, around the time that the last minimum wage increase occurred, to predict what the effects would be of the upcoming minimum wage increase is the second best approach. But what's the best available at the time that Bill number three, three sixteen dash thirty two was proposed? As we know, the best approach does not become available except in hindsight, only after actual data become available after the minimum wage increase takes place. For this reason, I support the timeline proposed by Bill number three seventy six dash thirty two, which will allow for approximately one year of data following the anticipated minimum wage increase, even after considering the nec, the necessary lags between when the data occurred and the time it was gathered, tallied, analyzed, and released to the public. As the bill states, the Guam Department of Labor were issued the RFP for the independent economic impact statement by January first, two thousand and sixteen, and for the economic impact statement to be made within, available within six months after the completion, which would be approximately June, two thousand and sixteen at the earliest, and transmitted to the Speaker of the Guam Legislature within thirty days, uh, thirty calendar days, approximately July sixteen, uh, July two thousand and sixteen at the earliest. To reiterate, I support the intent of Bill number three seventy six dash thirty two, as well as the timeline being proposed. In connection with this bill, I respectfully call our Guam Senators, uh, and members of this committee, and, uh, the larger, uh, senators from the Thirty Second Legislature, their attention to two considerations before you vote on this bill. The first consideration is to recognize that we have local economic experts who are capable of performing the required independent economic impact statement, including economic experts at the University of Guam, including but not limited to myself. Please understand that I am not expressing an interest to conduct this study, but I can assure you that if hypothetically, the University of Guam were to submit a proposal to perform the required economic impact statement, and if I were, and if I were part of the UOG team, I am confident that I possess the required expertise as demonstrated by my study of economics, which began twenty-seven years ago. My Ph.D. in economics from a quality program where twenty-five students in our batch were admitted, only seven graduated, and I was the first one to graduate at age six, twenty-six. Twenty years of work in the field of economics since earning my Ph.D. and seven years of expertise on the Guam economy, during which I developed a high-level familiarity with the availability of economic data and studies on Guam, and a positive reputation as one of the very few economists on Guam. I was the economist requested by the Guam Economic Development Authority and the Guam International Airport Administration to make a presentation to the Standard and Porce analysts who visited Guam for the first time in February, two thousand and thirteen, and who arrayed bonds issued by Gov Guam and other Guam entities. I also have the experience of conducting studies much more difficult, complicated, and comprehensive than what is required by Bill number three seventy six dash thirty two. Uh, examples of my previous work, uh, sorry to bore you with this, include an economy-wide study based on an economic model with twenty simultaneous equations with the aim of generating simulation of factual and counterfactual scenarios. More recently and more relevant to the bill was my work on an economic impact of a proposed Guam-based multimillion-dollar project on not only the Guam's economy, but also on those, uh, of other islands in the Western Pacific region. This work was based on a methodology I myself developed that is designed to accommodate the insufficient available data on the Guam economy. This work was submitted to the U.S. Federal Agency, which accepted it as valid economic analysis. Even more recently, I provided a report on yet another multimillion-dollar project on Guam, which is expected to create more than four hundred local jobs. The second consideration I would like our respective Guam Senators, respected Guam Senators to recognize is related to the first, in that, um, an economic impact statement performed by local experts would yield more relevant and accurate results than those that would be produced by off-island economic experts. This is because local experts are familiar with the insufficient data on the Guam economy, and that this insufficiency in available data is the primary reason why studies on Guam's economy often could not use methodologies or modeling tools such as RIMSTU implant or input-output, which are often used to perform similar studies in the U.S. states or jurisdiction, that off-island analysts tend to conduct economic impact studies that relate to Guam by using off-the-shelf economic simulation programs based on the RIMSTU implant or input-output methodology, and then inputting parameters from other jurisdictions, for example, Hawai's, or the common practice of finding a jurisdiction with a population size similar to Guam's, in that this approach has been criticized by local economists as being an inappropriate approach and has, and has leading to inaccurate misleading results. In this context, as Bill number three seventy six dash thirty two also includes language related to funding the required economic impact statement, please consider the better quality of study that local experts are capable of producing, and seriously question any tendency to compensate off-island experts more generously, while expecting local experts to perform this better quality study on a discounted basis or on pro bono basis under the guise of service. Such double standard does not serve our island well on many levels, including the fact that off-island payments resulting from such practice leave our island and take away from what could have been greater local purchasing power and higher economic activities on Guam. Once again, I humbly and respectfully thank the committee, uh, for hearing my testimony and doubtfully support, uh, Senator Alina Yamashita's bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Ruane. Um, Mr. Shingi?
Good morning, Senators, Mr. Chairman, Senators of the Thirty Second Guam Legislature. Uh, on behalf of the Board of Directors and membership of the Guam Chamber of Commerce, uh, we thank you for the opportunity to come out here and testify in support for Bill three seventy six dash thirty two, which would require the completion of an independent economic statement after one year of the new minimum wage increase that takes place on January one, two thousand and fifteen. The Guam Chamber of Commerce, as well as other business organizations, have shared their concerns on the adverse impacts that could be created through the passing of any minimum wage increase legislation. We were more concerned about the direct impact this would have on the smaller businesses, as well as the rising costs of goods and services on island. This, this sentiment was shared on numerous occasions where the request of an independent econ, independent impact study prior to passing of any wage increase legislation was reiterated to the Thirty Second Guam Legislature, and unfortunately, a fourteen percent increase in the minimum wage was passed and signed into law. We commend the author of this legislation in our efforts to raise the concerns of the business community by the introduction of Bill three seventy six. However, we would like to offer some recommendations towards this legislation to assure that it actually meets its intention. First of all, it is important to define the term independent, since it is vital that any study be as free as possible from the perspective of a political or business conflict of interest. Secondly, we recommend amending the term economic statement to the term economic study, since it is important that the results of the recent minimum wage increase be reviewed both comprehensively and objectively, and a study be, should be able to accomplish this intent versus a statement. And finally, we recommend that language be inserted that would prevent any new minimum wage increase proposal from being introduced prior to the results of the study. This would ideally serve the key objectives of this legislation. We understand that a, that certain federal laws do take precedence over local law, and if a new federal minimum wage were passed prior to the results of this study, then it would be the one and only exclusion. Bill three seventy six is important, as the community needs to see the impact of the recently passed minimum wage increase law, particularly from an economic perspective. This study needs to be independent, objective, and thorough, and only with these recommended changes, this legislation would serve that purpose. In closing, we definitely and certainly support Bill, Bill three seventy six dash thirty two, with the recommended amendments noted herein, and appreciate the opportunity to submit our testimony this morning. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Shingi. Uh, does anybody have any questions?
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I thank each of you for making the time. Um, I truly appreciate the, uh, the thoughts. I certainly stand for our local capacity. I am proud of what our local community does. I say that we can, we, we compete, and we do compete, and we prevail, and we hold our own across the globe. And so, with, um, uh, every request for proposal, I hope that everybody puts in their bid, and, uh, and, and you are absolutely right. Being local makes a difference. We know it, we get it, and we are just as smart, intelligent, as anybody else in this world, so, um, I hope that you do not take this as a slam against, uh, previous work, because that was not the intent at all. Thank you. Uh, and I do appreciate the community, the business community, which is our economic engine, uh, stepping up and saying what they need to say. Uh, together, together collectively, uh, we really do need to be serious about where we are and where we need to get, and this for me is a snapshot of getting there. So, thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator, Vice Speaker.
Thank you very much, Dr. Ruane. First, let me apologize, and thank you for allowing me to use you pro bono in, in vetting my bill, but I, I think it's important that, uh, Pastor Lewis, uh, and the others in the audience understand that we, we spent several, several meetings and several hours discussing, this was not done in a vacuum, and I'm sure there's some biblical passages also that talk about paying people correctly, but not knowing the Bible, I won't go into it. But, uh, I'm sure, uh, and for the business person that you say didn't budget it, it doesn't, doesn't go into effect until the first of next year. So, if that business person doesn't budget it for next year, then he really has some major problems, because it, uh, to be complaining about it, uh, that way is inappropriate. Uh, Manny, I'm concerned, as Director of the Department of Labor, did I understand your testimony to say that the department was opposed to the minimum wage increase?
In the beginning, like I said initially, because of the fact that it was arbitrarily at that time, our understanding to just to pass, uh, a, a, a minimum wage increase without a study arbitrarily, that was, that was our, our concern. But it wasn't that we, we opposed it, we just had an expression of any concern that, uh, that we need to do a, a study before.
In a prior life, Manny, before you took the position as Director, you served as the head of a union on island, if I remember correctly.
That's correct.
And were studies conducted prior to all the minimum wage increases since nineteen thirty-two, uh, or were they, as you put it, arbitrary? And were the increases that you proposed as the main union rep for the increases for your employees arbitrary, or did you have, conduct studies before it?
No, the studies were made because it was a federally mandated laws that we had to abide with, so.
Were they arbitrary, or were there studies done?
Uh, I think there were, there were, there were studies done, but, uh.
And did you believe that this one didn't have a study before it was done?
Well, that, that was the, that was the concern that we had, you know, that.
Did you bother to go, to, to call and find out whether or not we had, had, had several meetings with Dr. Ruane, uh, Dr. Jones, and others, uh, or did you just assume it?
No, no, because we have our own economists.
I understand, and also your economists, which is in favor of it.
Yes.
Because we had several discussions with him and also Mr. Paris.
That's correct.
Uh, before we introduced the legislation. I just wanted those facts clear, Manny, because I really don't appreciate the fact that this, this continuing belief that this was arbitrary, that I, I dreamt it up one night and I didn't do any studies. I pro bono'd, uh, imposed myself on very many people to ask many, many, many hours of, uh, discussions on this before it was, uh, it was done, so I just wanted to, to make that clear, right?
Well, you know, as the regulatory agency also, we, we, we had major concerns that, you know, uh, raising the minimum wage might have some impact on, on various, uh, communities and, and, and businesses. So, even if we support our employees from, from getting those pay raises, we were also concerned that some of those employees that are already working with, without the, the benefit of a higher, uh, higher wage might be also adversely impacted. So, in a sense, we were looking at, at the, at the bigger picture, and this is why we were saying that, uh, expressing this concern that, uh, we really need to have a better understanding so everybody on, you know.
As a union president, did you just, did, do, did you do studies on compression before you proposed increases of salaries for your, your members?
Well, most of those, if, if, if you understand, most of the wages that, we, we do not negotiate wages, most of those wages were, were, were given to us or mandated by Congress. So, we, 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 we go to those congressional hearings, and, and, and I'm sure my national, uh, national leaders, uh, when they testified, you know, for the, uh, for those, uh, increase of minimum wages, that they in fact had, uh, you know, their voice heard. So, i- in that respect, because of the, uh, federal, federal mandate mandates, when it comes down to us, we already have the, the wages in place. So, what, what we do as, as union activists is that if those wages are not being, uh, what you might call it, applied, then we have, we have major issues. And that's where, where we come in as representatives of labor, that we, we want those, uh, companies, and in this sense, the federal government of, of not giving, uh, let's say, uh, wages properly because of various regulations and so forth, that's where we come in and do our own, uh, research and do our own study. But those wages, uh, because of the fact that they are federally mandated, we have no choice but to enforce it, and, and that, that's what we do.
Thank you, and I'm sure that, uh, maybe you might assist me in finding the correct biblical passage that would talk about proper compensation to the workers.
Okay.
But, uh, Manny, I, actually, Bobby, on another one, and Dr. Ruane, and, and Manny, is there a mechanism in place now that records what prices were prior to Jan, July first? in place now that records what prices were prior to July first, twenty fourteen, what prices are now in September, what prices are going to be in January? Because I've noticed over the last month, that though the minimum wage increase has not gone into effect and will not go into effect for the next three months, and I'm sure Bobby understands what I'm talking about, many, many restaurants already have increased their, since I'm a single person and I go out to eat, I see that the value meals have gone up a dollar already before this increase, and I think that should be taken into account that some of these increases that are going into effect even before the salary increase should not be attributed to the salary, I mean, the minimum wage increase, that the prices should be set after July fifth, January first, when they go into effect, not these increases, because I go to all the inexpensive restaurants and I eat the special for the day, and they've all gone up a dollar, so I noticed that it's in anticipation, but that should not be counted towards this study, and I think it's imperative that when this study or this statement is done, that you don't take prices from January twenty fourteen, compare it to prices in January twenty sixteen, and say it's gone up fourteen percent, because we've had increases since the passage of this bill, but before the implementation of the salary increase, so it would be unfair to attribute that to the passage of the legislation. And so I just wanted to put that on record at this point, because I'm sure all of you are noticing that, because I'm very much aware of it as I go out in need. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Without hesitation, respond to some of the statements made.
Senator Ogun.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and folks, thank you for your presentation this morning, just indirectly, only because I did work in that particular environment previously. I think the Vice Speaker has a very legitimate issue, and there is, there are numbers associated and reviewed and collected by the various statistics and plans that will reflect the pricing model for commodities, for food, and for services, based on the responsibilities that they carry out in providing the consumer price index. So, there is already some information that has been generated that whoever conducts this assessment will be able to review, so, Mr. Vice Speaker, you're very correct in terms of taking those issues into consideration before the minimum wage increases are permitted.
Actually, had I thought about it, I probably would have gone and taken pictures of menus before May, because I'm sure I'm not going to be able to find those menus now, but taken pictures of those menus before May and compared them to now, because all the places that I go to have already increased there. And so, and I know the CPI, at least in my reading of it, doesn't break down menu items that way. It doesn't show that, nor does the study that's done by the Department of Labor, it doesn't break down the menu items that way.
Senator Hapdell. No questions, okay. I just got a couple of questions. First of all, Dr. Rowan, you certainly went to pretty great extent here to pretty much emphasize the fact that really the study should be done by local economists.
Yes, Mr. Vice Chair.
And so, I guess if I was to summarize what your testimony was, was that it probably would be preferred that the language stayed here, that the study be sole source to the University of Guam?
It doesn't have to be the University of Guam, but I think local experts have an advantage in coming up with better studies than off-island experts.
Well, but then the problem that I see then is that a local company such as maybe Deloitte Touche could put in a bid for it, and then hire an economist from off-island within their circle to do the work. So, it's, you know, if we don't, it's kind of like locking the front door by keeping the back door open, and I see that kind of problem with it.
If I may, I'm not in a position to commit to university, though.
Understand.
So I'm not able to make.
All I'm saying is that if we're going to keep it locally, it's going to have to be really almost sole source and language to that effect. The other thing is, is that the bill here states, of course, that Department of Labor, you shall issue an RFP, then another section requires the governor to identify funds, and I imagine, I mean, if I was going to, I mean, if I was going to respond to your RFP, unless I knew that there was funding there, I'm not going to take the time to, you know, to put together my proposal, which I'm sure is not going to be in the back of an envelope if you're really going to do a serious study, so I kind of see that as being problematic, and that is probably something that we need to tie, so that it kind of, you know, it's almost symbiotic. Funds will be there, and you shall issue an RFP. And those were my only two questions, actually, on the bill itself, and so there's no.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is for Dr. Rowan, just in relation, as a follow-up to his questioning regarding the economic impact study and how your testimony had alluded to the insufficiency of data and it not lending itself to off-island analysts. Can you give us an idea of how local economists are doing it? Because the insufficiency of data, I would think, would affect whoever did it, and how are you complementing the study with that or supplementing data with it? And I'm also curious, as the Vice Speaker alluded to, that the minimum wage increase that is now signed into law was based on prior studies. I'm curious to know, with the insufficiency of data that you're referring to, what led to, or what confidence level do we have in those prior studies?
I mean, I'd like to have the studies to be more detailed, and as I mentioned, in a lot of studies in other U.S. locations, the model is ready to go and basically just plug in the numbers. My concern is if somebody who doesn't want to deal with insufficiency of data, all they need to do is buy the model and plug in some other jurisdictions number to reflect Guam, so that's always been my issue. Yes, we have the data challenge here, but it's become more work for a local economic expert to develop our own methodology in response to that. I did mention I've had two successes in doing that, totaling close to seventy million-dollar project that creates local jobs and, you know, and lead to local taxes being paid. So there is a way to do it, but it's not a last-minute type of work that needs to be done, so I like the timeline of the bill, because it certainly gives, from my reading, is the RFP goes out in January and the report pretty much gets submitted in July of two thousand and sixteen. But we do have data on CPI, it's not as disaggregated as we'd like it to be, so if I may also address the Vice Speaker's comment, that I also notice a lot of prices on island going up in the summertime, and part of it is related to shipping, the cost of fuel goes up at that time, too. So, there is a methodology where you could take out the seasonality, and, you know, so maybe the increase in the menu prices might be related to that. It's, we can invent a methodology to separate out maybe the anticipated effect of the minimum wage there.
Now, I understand the methodology, and whichever model you choose to use would be more customized for Guam, but whatever model you choose for Guam, I'm concerned of your remarks regarding the insufficiency of data that you would input into that model. So how were those insufficiencies of data used for the model that led to the minimum wage increase that is signed into law? What data was used, or how was the data generated if you cite the insufficiency of data? And then going forward, obviously, if this bill passes, where, what, are there better data, are we capturing the data now that would be used for those prior models, or do you still foresee that insufficiency of data occurring when we do come to the point where we do need to do this study?
Well, I mean, I see two kinds of studies, the one of the studies that I was able to review from the Vice Speaker's office was the direct impact of the last minimum wage on employment trends, and one expectation is that as soon as minimum wage went up, and we had three sets, three timings of that, from two thousand and seven, two thousand and nine, and there's no response at all from the employment side. So in a sense, I mean, interpretation-wise, some might expect a negative effect of the minimum wage on jobs, and that was just not in the data that was available. As I said, I played devil's advocate, I wanted to give the Vice Speaker and his staff a hard time, I'd like to, you know, I'd like to make sure that we cover everything, and once presented with the data that we have, and unfortunately, that's what we have, and I don't think that's going to change between now and a year and a half from today, but at the same time, it's not like we did not look at the data. I mean, at some point, your hands are tied, this is the best we could do. Now, in terms of what I understand what the bill is requiring, it's a bigger, it's a bigger approach to looking at the impact not only in employment, but, you know, on social conditions as well, and the larger economy as well, and that's where I said I was able to develop a methodology that's been actually vetted by a federal agency.
And that's where, I think, we're both on the same page, is that I agree with you, that the insufficiency of data really doesn't make the study any less viable, or you can't make heads or tells of it, I should say, I mean, as an economist, you know that if people aren't actively looking for a job, they're not in the unemployment rate, correct?
Yes.
So if that accuracy, that data accuracy or insufficient data is available, you couldn't thoroughly base that study on saying, yes, the unemployment rate didn't go down, because we may not really know who's applying for a job or not. So that insufficiency of data doesn't necessarily justify the study, and so that's our concern is the, I agree with you, there's an insufficiency of data, but you can't make heads or tells of the study if you don't know the accuracy of the data.
But at the same time, it doesn't justify not doing a study as well.
No, and I agree with you there, it has to be done, and so that was the question, is what level of confidence are we going to have that we're going to have better data this time? And I think we both agree that we don't have it yet. Maybe a year from now, we would have it, hopefully, we would have it.
And especially if there is a plan to capture the impact, I'd like to think that we can improve on data collection, and the idea, of course, is being able to approach this in different ways, so, you know, multiple calculations going on, approaching this from different angles.
Yeah, and that's the concern, is not only the sufficiency of the data, but the accuracy of it, right? So garbage in, garbage out, and so hopefully we have good data going in, so we can get accurate.
But I wanted to say, though, I'd like to think local economists would use less garbage in, because this is so important to us.
No, and I understand that, but your hands are tied with the, like you said in your testimony, and I agree with you a hundred percent, is the sufficiency of the data is going to be the success or the unsuccessful of the study, so, thank you, Doctor, appreciate it.
Thank you.
I just have one final question, Dr. Rowan. In looking closer at the bill, it proposes that the RFP for the study be issued no later than January twenty sixteen, so let's say December of twenty fifteen, and then, of course, you know, by the time you identify who to award it to, there could be another ninety days. I'm just concerned about a year later, then we issue who's going to do the study, so then now we're going to have to go back and compile all that data and ask the, at least the businesses to be, to participate in this study, as opposed to maybe issuing the RFP at the front end, so that if in fact Mr. Shringi's firm is selected to do the study, then he's collecting the data as we go forward, or at least we've identified what data elements need to be collected. So I'm just concerned about, and then, of course, the bill, we have a date as to when that RFP needs to be issued, and, you know, reasonably, maybe ninety days after that, an award is made, but it doesn't really have, it doesn't say when this study needs to be done, it just kind of leaves it open-ended, and just, other than that, the results shall be made available within six months from the date of completion, so, you know, I don't know if this is a study that can be completed within, you know, a hundred and twenty days, such that, you know, so there's no finality in this thing here, we know about approximately when it's going to start, it doesn't say when it has, you know, when it must end, and, but we do know that from whenever it ends, six months after that, the results have to be made available, so I just kind of point that out, so.
My reading of it is the RFP goes out by January two thousand and sixteen, and not even counting how long it takes to review and get the award, but my counting of it, so the way I count it, the shortest time possible is six months from there, is when the results, the study becomes made, becomes available, and then one month later is when it's submitted to the Speaker of the Legislature, so that's my, those were my references for, about June two thousand and sixteen would be the earliest time when the study becomes available, and July two thousand and sixteen is when it's submitted to the Speaker.
The way you read section one is that the results of the impact study shall be made available within six months from the date of completion, but the date of completion is not identified, so, you know, that could be twenty eighteen. If there's no further questions from this panel, we're going to go ahead and dismiss you, and then call the remaining folks that have signed up, Mr. Pitzgrau and Ms. Mary Rhodes.
Senator, again, for the record, my name is. And I'm testifying in my personal capacity. First of all, I wanted to be able to say that I support the bill, however, I feel the bill needs considerable amendments, and I'm going to explain why. First of all, I want to disagree with the previous testimony, which I think is significant, and I'll give a specific example. If we were to limit information, just to information available in Guam, you have significant problems, and I'm going to give you the example of why. Also, with respect to the testimony, there was a total nondisclosure of two separate things. To support limiting for increasing wages to Guam information, yet before stating that the studies were done including what happened in other states with minimum wage. Now, my justification that no environmental, no economic impact statement, none, could be accurate for the people of Guam and total disclosure to the people of Guam if you don't include data outside. Now, let me give you a couple of examples. We live on an island. In Seattle right now, there's litigation by businesses of all sizes, small businesses, the McDonald's of the world that employ a lot of children, because of the increase of the minimum wage, which is now the highest in the country to fifteen dollars an hour, that is going to affect shipping costs before we even do anything here, it's a given, because a lot of snacks and ships, or ships even in the past, are the only ones out of Seattle, Tacoma, that have direct routes nonstop to Guam. So if you have a fifteen-dollar increase in minimum wage and it only applies to Seattle, Tacoma, where the port is, you bet it's going to cause food prices to go up. So you can't exclude what's happening, and I'm using that as an example, to just Guam, because what happens in parts of the states affect Guam. Another example is, we all know that the price of corn here in Guam has gone up in certain circumstances, when farmers' crops. certain circumstances, when farmers' crops have been damaged by either fires or tornadoes. And the same happened for a lot of other crops, because, you know, simply put, um, the supply becomes smaller than the demand. Um, I'd like to just skip right over a couple other things I think are important, and I would like to use, um, what the group I put together and the business plan we came up with to build a new hospital in Guam. It was impossible to use data from Guam, to arrive at a business plan that ultimately resulted in an investor, that ultimately resulted in twenty-two banks that basically had to come together, uh, and consolidate the risk for a three-hundred-million-dollar project. Twenty-two banks had to agree with the business plan we prepared, but the problem that we seriously had on Guam is a lack of data. We have such a lack of data that if I was just to use, and the twenty-two people that spent eight months to arrive at that business plan, um, if we were to limit the data of Guam, we would have, that hospital would never be built. So where did we go off-island? We met with the Director of Health and Human Services of Region Nine at the end of the Bush administration. We had three days of meetings with him, because he had more accurate data than Guam had. Um, another example is, we flew to Washington, DC. We met with Navy Medicine, because we wanted to compare, per comparisons of costs with how much it cost them to build a hospital, but we then, they helped us subtract out the additional cost of building a military hospital, because they're built like bunkers. So like this forty-three-bed hospital is twice the cost of the hundred-and-thirty-bed hospital. If we didn't meet Navy Medicine, and we didn't have that data, we could, if we put in the business plan that for a forty-three-bed hospital, or for what's happening now with a, a hundred-and-thirty-bed hospital, no investor was going to ba- invest almost a hundred, uh, almost close to, um, I would say nine-hundred million dollars was our estimate, to build a hundred-and-thirty-bed hospital. So it was critical to get off-island, um, information. I don't know if many of you, I'm, I'm sure all of us have bought hot dogs at the Ngata stand for many, many years of our lives. The Ngata family, when this was first starting, I never knew they had a son who was an orthopedic surgeon. I called him, told him what we were planning to do, and he invited me to a small town called Mitchell, South Dakota. Mitchell, South Dakota has sixty thousand people, but the farming towns around have forty thousand people. But that was the first time we wanted to learn. It was the first hospital that was visited, because we saw some similarities to Guam, even with respect to their chronic disease profile. This hospital was a hundred-and-thirty beds. It had a full-blown cancer center. It had a full-blown rehab center. It had a helicopter pad, and it was nonprofit. But a nonprofit in terms of their financials, the target of, of your profit is between four to seven percent, which is different than a private hospital, because they take a hundred percent of that money and reinvest it back into the hospital. So if you had, if we didn't, and I met with every, I was there for ten days and stayed with Dr. Ngata. I was in his surgical suites in every operating, uh, operation he had, so I can learn some of the costs, what had to be done in certain surgeries, how many nurses, how many staff. Um, one of the, learned that one of most of the critical divisions, which I never knew for revenue of the hospital, is housekeeping. Because during the first surgery, I looked at, when he said, okay, ready to close, a nurse goes to, a bell rings in, within five minutes, the housekeeping staff is there to get the clean place, to get all, um, bacteria anywhere for the next surgery. Two hours later, the next person comes in. It's almost like a ballroom in a hotel. If it's not occupied, there's no revenue. The surgical suites is where a lot of revenue comes into the hospital, so you got them in and out. There's no waste of time. It was very efficient. The hospital administrator, if we didn't get data from him, if we didn't get data for the diagnostic, director of diagnostics in every division of the hospital, it would have been a worthless trip. Um, the other data that we received as well is, we actually flew to Lake Tahoe. Lake Tahoe has almost identical population as Guam. Um, a lot of the demographics are similar to Guam, and a lot of people don't know this, but their chronic profile is similar to Guam. So when we went to different places and, and we looked for similarities to Guam, um, I forget the name of the town, uh, some of us also flew to, in Texas. It was on the border of Mexico. Um, oh, I think it was about a hundred-and-ninety thousand population. Um, the chronic and the most highest chronic disease was diabetes. Their diabetes rate was higher than us. Um, Hispanics were the highest population rate, and their eating habits were very similar to the Chomoroe eating habits. Um, their cancer rate was almost identical to ours. I mean, we have about three men every week that have cancer here. We have about two-point-five women every week. Now, this hospital is going to have a full-blown cancer center, because the data we got off-island from different places that had the same or similar cancer cro- chronic profile. Um, let me just, let me just go back now to, um, some of the things, and, and by the way, Senator, I will be submitting written testimony of this. I, I just recently got back. Um, I'd like to say that I agree with, um, uh, Dr. Clare- Lorraine on, on one matter. Um, the de- the details of what the economic impact statement is not contained in this bill. So if you put out an RP on this thing, you can comply without giving enough information to give the people of Guam how much this is going to cost. What I wanted to suggest, to save time, is the existing law that was talked about earlier, which all senators in that legislature supported except one. They all became cosponsors of it, other than one, and it was the current time Governor, uh, Eddie Calvo introduced the bill, but everybody was a cosponsor, including two senators that are sitting senators today. And that's the triple-A law. There's only three sections of the law, and one of them, which says, what are the requirements of the economic impact statement? Honestly, you can cut and paste of it, paste it, because many states use the same language, so I'm assuming that it was borrowed from several states. But I think there's at least about fifteen requirements of what, uh, the inter- the, uh, economic impact statement must contain, and I, I agree that we must be able, in this bill, um, to actually, and, and when an RFP goes out, we have to be, give guidance to who's responding to it. And I want to end with this, is, um, about three months ago, I attended a conference in, um, uh, on public-private partnerships in Los Angeles. Um, the conference was done by, uh, National Development, National Devi- uh, Development, uh, Cooperative. It's a nonprofit organization that basically teaches how private sector works with governments, um, how private sectors respond to RFPs. And they taught us in about, um, a two-hour session, that in the United States, the largest reason why when RFPs are issued and fail is because the RFPs are not well-written. And, you know, I was curious at the time, because if some of you know, I started working on a strategy to build a veterans' hospital. And so I was curious, and they recommended three companies that could prepare the RFP for a hospital, but the thing that shocked me is it only costs five thousand dollars to hire this company that does nothing but write RFPs for states in the entire region. Because, you know, states face some of the things and the problems we have, where they, they had to then, you know, withdraw the RFP, because nobody really understood it, or there was confusion, there were protests, or there were cost overruns. Um, and last, I, I really suggest that, um, just knowing my experience with, uh, data at the Department of Labor, I think it would result in also, you know, what is, you are seeking to accomplish by this bill, if you were to combine the work with the Department of Labor, or the Guam Economic Development Authority. Because at least in my experience, I'm finding that the information in one and the information in other, there's a lot of not talking to each other. But if you combine that information, um, and you create some mandates on what they must do when working together, um, I think you're going to have a better result. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Skro.
Hola, buenas, everybody. I apologize for my voice. Um, as our vice speaker knows, we had our housekeeping gala, uh, on Saturday, and we celebrated, um, our thousands of housekeepers with, uh, nine hundred people, about nine hundred people in attendance, so my voice is a bit hoarse from that event, so I apologize. I'd like to thank, um, of course, Senator Elena Meschita for introducing this bill and listening, um, to those who were very concerned during the time that the wage bill was being, uh, proposed as a draft bill legislation and passed into law with revisions. And then, of course, thank you to Chairman R- Respecho and Vice Chairman, Mr. Tomada, uh, Senator Tomada, for having this session. Um, we are very grateful for this opportunity. Um, we do know that, uh, you know, it has been a challenge, and we do know our economy is growing, and we cannot afford to arbit- arbitrarily make those changes. And with respect to Vice Speaker Cruz, I do know that a lot of data was provided, but I think a lot of people feel it was arbitrary, because it didn't have reliable and accurate data for Guam, um, current data for Guam. And there wasn't an actual study. It would make reference to a lot of data points and other studies, but it was not something that really was for Guam, uh, in order to justify a wage increase. Um, we really, uh, on behalf of the Guam Hotel and Restaurant Association, for the record, my name is Mary Rhodes. I am the president for the organization, and I do speak for more than half of our members who voted against for the wage survey at the time and supported an independent economic survey. Um, at the time, also during previous testimonies, I did speak to the triple-A process, although this is not a regulatory change or, um, administrative change to an existing rule regs. I think that, um, Chairman Pete Skro of the Guam Chamber of Commerce has valid points on the fact that this piece of legislation that we're discussing today needs to, um, be amended to include language from the triple-A process that clearly defines the RFP process for an economic impact study. Um, as Dr. Ruane stated, the economists at the time did make, uh, second-best guesses based on old data. According to the Guam Depart- Department of Labor Director, Mr. Manny Cruz, he also shared concern, which I know that Vice Speaker, um, did, you know, question, make sure that, because he did have one of his staff, which was one of the economists included, um, actually make a review of this. And although I think that they're all very capable and, um, obviously probably more educated than most of us in this room, I think that it was, uh, something that was pushed, uh, very quickly to, although it did get the support, I don't think that it had accurate data at the time to make a decision. But it is our responsibility as government leaders, as private sector leaders, to make sound decisions, especially something that has such a huge impact, not just for our economy, but for our people of Guam. Um, it is our responsibility to ensure that we do add that language, so that we can also prevent any additional increases until an economic impact study is completed, reviewed, and analyzed by this body, um, of the legislature. And we need to ensure that that language is included as well, not just the amendments for the triple-A process, but language to prevent any additional wage increases, um, going forward. We all know hindsight is twenty-twenty, and we are here today to ensure that it does not happen again. But I do want to be clear that the language originally in the proposed legislation at the time during, for the minimum wage increase, did identify the University of Guam as a sole entity to act as a sole source provider for this RFP, which we strongly spoke out against. And although they are, again, um, probably much smarter than we are, um, and way more capable, uh, we have to look at the way RFPs are done. It is not a sole source. It is an opportunity to give anyone, whether on-island or off-island, I don't think that it is really our role to identify who is, um, going to be conducting the study. That is the whole purpose of an RFP. But if we look at the way the Bureau of Statistics and Plans and GITA conduct RFPs, if you look at the SEEDs, which is the Community Economic Development Strategy Plan, they actually fund more than a dozen economic impact studies. And those studies have an average, or around the average, of two-hundred thousand dollars per study that they spend. So this is more than, to me and to GHRA, more than just a wage survey. This is truly an economic impact study, not just for wages. It is about how it's going to impact our economy, what resources are going to be affected, and what's going to happen, um, in, for our current, our future situation. So it's imperative that we really allow the RFP process to be structured in the proper manner, and we allow it to happen in the timeline that's agreed upon. But as I said, the bill does need to define the structure of that, and it needs to be free from political affiliation and free from any conflicts of interest. It needs to be fair and impartial, and if you look at the GITA or Bureau of Statistics and Plan model, it actually has the RFP and, and with the budgets already included, maybe that's an opportunity to work with them directly to ensure that this is done properly, and it's already funded through one of their surveys that they already planned in the current year. So if you look at what the Comprehensive Economic Development, which is also known as SEEDs, it's really, uh, created over the last several years, probably, um, since its inception, is to provide and sta- uh, provide information to stabilize and grow the eco- economy, to improve quality of life and public services. That really is at the heart of what the wage survey increase was for, or is for. And so SEEDs really provides the long-term economic development strategies for projects or impacts changes to the economy, provided by the government. And so I'm strongly suggesting, um, that these, this wage, um, in economic impact study have strong consideration to not maybe have Guam Department of Labor lead it, that it really fall under GITA or Bureau of Statistics and Plans, or maybe it's a consolidation with them or collaborative effort, so that, um, it's not just wage-related under Guam Department of Labor, it's actually through GITA or Bureau of Statistics and Plans. The EIS, again, it, it is, uh, something that we all support, and I, we are in favor of this, but I just wanted to end on, uh, two points, because I know that there are a lot of additional comments made on, um, how the market is performing at this time. And as, uh, Dr. Ruane stated, that the price increases that you see, we cannot solely assign it to a wage increase, um, at all. So we need to understand that the market is driven by various things, whether it's price increases and costs and shipping, um, the market demand of what people are willing to pay, and the margins are not solely based on wage increases. And then also, um, as we, as Senator Michael M. Tiago ma- ma- mentioned about the insufficient use of the data, um, it did not provide a fair and comparable review. It referred to information from off-island, but also local, but it did not take into consideration how it affects wages and how it affects the economy. Um, to say that there were job increases during the time of the last minimum wage increase is not a clear, uh, compares, or not a fair comparison to really what we're talking about. Those wage, those job increases or, um, net growth was not because of minimum wage jobs. They were because of the time when we were going through the buildup. Those jobs came from construction, and most of those jobs, majority if not all, had prevailing wages under the Davis-Bacon Act. So it is not fair to say that those job increases, um, that they weren't affected. And I provided a lot of data during my testimony of how many employers actually had job losses or change in, um, the type of job, uh, description from full-time to part-time jobs. So it, as provided in previous testimonies, hundreds of jobs were lost during the last minimum wage inc- increase, and it wouldn't be, um, completely accurate to take what commodities or prices of things are in January as compared to this coming January and contrib- attributed solely to wage increases. That is not how, um, you perform like an economic study. That is not a fair, um, uh, attributable, uh, factor into prices. We... We here on Guam, especially being an island, we deal with so many increases because we import majority of what we have um to offer as a, as a service, uh, as a product here on the island. So it's very difficult, although, yes, we are rather lacking in data in some areas. I think we have come a long way with uh some of the agencies who do track data, and it is available through some of our government agencies. But I would be very careful not to take the prices of products or services and attribute it to the wage increase come this January, because it's not a reason to consider another wage increase. We need this EIS, and we need it to be done right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Rhodes.
Um, she just brought up a point that I, I, this will be brief. Um, I would like to suggest, Senators, that um careful scrutiny be made to the company that's providing all the data um and updates of data for the government of Guam. I think many of you are aware of, of what happened, uh, and that's only one incident with public health where data was lost. Data should never be lost. And I suggest you also look at those contracts, because it's a violation of federal law to have any provision in any contract where an IT company is providing services to the government that states that they own the data. Because every IT company that is paid by the state, the data is not owned by them. The data is owned by the people of Guam and the taxpayers of Guam and that, that bought the IT system. So for example, and I'll end with this, is um my birth certificate, under their contract, they own it. I own my birth certificate, and every person on Guam owns that birth certificate. Um, that's just one example, but in almost all states, uh, the federal government requires that there be no IT contract that has a provision, and I believe that that change is made, our data system will actually be more accurate. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, does anybody have any questions on this panel?
Just a quick comment. Ms. Rhodes, thank you very much for your closing comment, because I was not trying to say that the increase in salary was as a result of the wage increase. I wanted to put it on the record today, because I'm noticing these increases now before the increase, the minimum wage goes up. And I did not want anybody in the future to say, see, things went up so much because of the minimum wage. And I will quote you back your testimony several times in the future. And I want to actually commend the Guam Hotel and Restaurant Association. You are probably, with the smallest staff you have, have probably some of the best data on this island. In fact, the most compelling data for, for my office when we were preparing for this minimum wage, wage increase came from the Hotel Restaurant Association. It was the Guam Hotel and Restaurant Association that recorded in their nineteen, uh, two thousand and seven reports that the me- mean uh room rate was eighty-eight dollars. And it reported that the mean room rate for two thousand and fourteen was a hundred and forty-four dollars. But it also reported that the increase between two thousand and seven and two thousand and fourteen for the uh wages for the employees went up twenty-eight cents. Not twenty-eight percent, twenty-eight cents. So I want to thank you and the Hotel Restaurant Association for providing us with probably the most compelling and most thorough information that assisted us in preparing the bill so that we could celebrate with those nine-hundred people this last weekend, their minimum wage increase. And if you notice, when I spoke, I did not mention the minimum wage increase in my, in my testimony, because I wasn't gonna turn it into a political uh affair. I was just celebrating the fact that they have, as of last month, supported and made the visit of one-point-two-three million people enjoyable and clean. And hopefully by this end of this month, we'll get to one-point-three as was planned. So I just wanted to make sure that, uh, wanted to thank you because your testimony will not be now recorded so that in future, I will not be u- it would not be used and say, see, it was as a result of that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Speaker.
Uh, Senator.
There being no further sign-ups. Um, Bill three-seven-six-dash-three-two is hereby duly heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Uh, now, we have Bill three-nine-two-dash-three-two. It's an act to add a new subsection C to section thirty-one oh-two of chapter three, title three, relative to voter preregistration of persons at least sixteen years of age. Uh, I'll have the author uh give a brief overview.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chairman. I apologize for the slight delay. Uh, Mr. Chairman, this particular legislation, as you may be aware, nationwide, there are opportunities being created in terms of being able to get individuals who have reached the age of sixteen to eighteen uh to be able to preregister through a process. And this is starting to catch on quite a bit nationwide, and it's a concept that was brought to our attention in the office by two individuals who had uh joined the office just during the course of the summer as interns. And one thing that they recognized is not only did they come in with the idea of trying to understand the legislative process, but they left with a strong understanding and comprehension of the importance of every single vote. And that also, that situation led to them encouraging, I believe, seven or eight of their peers to be able to register and, and participate in the upcoming electoral process. So I, it shows that when we, in fact, reach out to a younger generation and to a youth in our community, that they are definitely interested, but they need some additional incentive, if not encouragement, to be able to participate in the process. So, Mr. Chairman, this is, this is really focused on bringing our future leaders, rightfully so, in full circle so that they can participate at a much earlier age, so they can contribute to our island community. There's a lot of other issues that perhaps I could highlight, but I think it's, it's self-explanatory in terms of the nature of this particular proposal. It would require some tweaking, and I do know that uh imposing some additional uh, I guess, processes with the Guam Election Commission is recognized in this proposal. Working and partnering with the Division of Motor Vehicles so that they can, in fact, assist in this process is gonna be, is gonna certainly require some additional collaboration on the part of these particular government of Guam agencies. But we know that back in the twenty-seventh Guam legislation, there was a similar process that allowed individuals who were acquiring a driver's license that once they turn eighteen, that they automatically be registered to the selective service process. So just looking at that concept and that process, uh, it could possibly be mirrored in terms of allowing individuals between the ages of sixteen and eighteen to also preregister so that once they hit the age of eighteen, they, they can be actively uh re- recognized and identified in the register. So thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and to the committee for having the hearing on this particular legislation. And I look forward to any testimony that will be ready. Thank you.
Uh, there were no sign-ups for Bill three-nine-two-dash-three-two. However, I wanna note that the Guam Election Commission will provide written testimony after its meeting on Thursday, uh, September eighteen, two thousand and fourteen. And I will deem the uh Bill three-nine-two dash-three-two as having been duly heard. Uh, there being no further uh bills to be heard. Um, I will now adjourn of this public hearing.